Hi. Good. Um. And. We. It's not very, it's, there's a lot of. I would be happy to say something. And it's really. Why? It is as well. Longest.
Lester. Nimitchek.
Here.
Conklin. Moody.
Eric.
Neenham.
Eric.
Warren Breton.
Uh, Commissioners, I entertain a motion to excuse Commissioner Lass. Here we ran a board. Issue come up this morning.
I may have a question.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by moving that in how it's still likely to be dealt with by one commission motion. Without discussion. Any member of the commission staff publicly asked that any item or items under consent agenda be removed and voted that the last item under due business. To receive full discussion. Such request will be automatically reserved. We have four items. A, approve the May 2023 special meeting minutes as presented. I can immediately approve the May 9, 2023 special meeting minutes as presented. C, approve the May 9, 2023 regular meeting minutes as presented. And D, approve the recommendation from Mayor E. Apple to reappoint Jeff Ross, Larry Shute, and Monica Ross with the planning commission. For planning terms, for terms ending May 30, 2026. Anyone in the audience who, uh, that I can't decide to move to new business? Commission? If not, any, any, what should we put through the consent agenda?
I may vote for the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Sorry. Or call Jessica.
Conklin.
Ah. Aye.
Moody.
Aye.
Neenham.
All right.
What's your Gary?
Hey, moving on, we have citizen cabinets. If we can citizens comments on nine agenda items. Anyone interested in addressing. On the nine agenda, commission nearby. David?
David. With that. Okay, so.
Dave, Dave, you speak to name, address, and you can go in like five minutes, and Jessica will keep in touch.
Yeah. Kind of used to this. Occasionally so. Um. My name is David Grayson under the 400 Silver Street. Or maybe I don't, if my attorney is advising me depending on which attorney. So I'm here to discuss. This rather troublesome. Um. Go around, sorry, a little bit of rushing everything I. Thoughts here in order about. The city, um, commission. I, I'm just gonna say it highly. With this discussion about the state theater. I mean, I don't really care about the state, well, I shouldn't say I don't really care about the state theater. I'm not the state theater, sorry, the Boine Theater. Um. Right. I realize that the city has spent or has committed four hundred, roughly four hundred thousand dollars to that endeavor. Starting in 2020, I think, if I had my dates right, but. This kind of. What I can only surmise is trying, uh, is trying to. Keep this from public view, this discussion of the public view, these, these, these racking house that, um. Uh, Mr. Kane is providing, keeping this off the public agenda are clearly quite, actually stunning. I mean, last week I was here at a meeting and someone was complaining about transparency government about. The electric lines being proposed on division going from twenty eight to thirty five feet or from twenty to twenty eight. And I'm like, yeah, that. That might be a transparency problem, but this is in a league of its own. I mean, this is truly possibly in violation, right, of Open's Meeting Act and Mr. Kane's citation of the. Of, of these statutes. I've taken up with a lawyer, you know, this attorney general's office, the state, but she was laughing so loud, I think she read herself and had to excuse herself in the. Phone conversation. I mean, if this is attorney client privilege, I mean, I'm thanking each and every one of you here. In Mr. Laston's absence for, you know, getting into your own pocket and paying. Ponca de Cooney for these. For these legal services regarding the Boine Theater. Um, because clearly. Client attorney privilege, privilege, excuse me, is between. An attorney and the people that, uh, people or persons that pay that attorney. Well, unless you people, you find four or five guys are paying the attorneys directly, which I don't think is occurring. I think it's taxpayers, boy, it's city are paying. Ponca de Cooney, we are in fact clients, there is no rationale. For this information to be taken off the board. Like this and so completely. I, I mean, you leave us, leave me or other educated citizens surmise that this is another kind of. Maybe a cover your ass for the things that have gone on at the theater, I don't know. I mean, you know, this thing started in 2020. You, maybe, maybe you've got seventeen years of catch up to play with. Point Charlie with the trail or something, but please don't keep going down. This, this is really, and it don't, in every vote here that I see here on record is five. To O support five zero. In support of these actions. And I think that's. Actually, I think it's very irresponsible, and I think it's not gonna get you to any outcome that is gonna make anybody in this city happy. It's gonna be another marina, you have another year lovely. You know, hearings. And a bunch of more than people, plus might have some legal. Issues as well, so I just, so like on the item of the minutes, I'm just gonna say for the record. Though, though Mike O'Kane will not say it, it's to a point of almost absurdity. This is about the Boine Theater, these discussions, this disemployment, all the Kumi by the better. Right, city commission paid by the citizens of Boine City is in fact. A discussion of the Boine Theater, what's going on with it, the legal ramifications. How that can be construed or taken off the board of discussion is, I mean, I, I have a few years of experience in municipal government. I've never seen anything like it. I understand issues being taken off in closed sessions because. You know, personnel issues or, um. Union collective bargaining agreements, and that all makes perfect sense. This doesn't make any sense at all, and I really wish you guys, I really wish you would stop because. It doesn't speak well in this commission, and it doesn't, it's not gonna do well for the citizens of this city, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on. Yeah, um, of course, bonded, there's just certification, there's energy. Right, it's possible, right, I think. If anything else, anything you guys. All right, moving on. Right, City Manager here for.
Uh, few items for the commission and the public today. Uh, line treatment is the third removal, uh, to the public after the payment that was removed for the sanitary sewer main and line replacements. Uh, was replaced last week. A punchless inspection for the project is being scheduled. Uh, last Friday, the city received from, uh, the state a modified, uh, marina permit consistent with kind of that, uh, three. As previously approved by the city committee. We hope receive a similar rule from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in the near future. Uh, preliminary reports are that the mushroom festival and its activities, uh, related to it went well last weekend. The Iron Ten Ferry left the city's main boat launch on Monday, uh, where it was being worked on since its removal, uh, Lake Charlotte last fall. And as they are scheduled to go back into operations Friday, all those. The new splash pad for Peninsula Beach Park is to be dedicated and open to the public, uh, today at five P.M. at Peninsula Beach Park. All commissioners, the public are encouraged to attend. Uh, right next to the new splash pad, the Boine City Rotary Club has installed the foodie, the footings for their new shelter, which is also being erected in Peninsula Beach Park. Uh, you'll see more progress on that moon as well, too. A reminder that, uh, the Tampa Michigan Mountain Bike Association will be holding, uh, dedication ceremony for the new Downville Jump Line Trail called Beria. As part of the Boine Forest Trail System north of the city of Old Horton, uh, Bay Road and Bad Line Township. That'll take place this Wednesday, the twenty fourth at five thirty at the beginning. Uh, everybody is welcome to attend that as well. Uh, we're sad to announce that we received from, uh, Assistant Planner, Bonnie Chachula. Uh, her, uh, her decision to leave the city's employment, uh, in June. She has done a great job for us and we wish her all the best and we've been on a search for her replacement. And you have any questions on either of our items that we've had to practice?
We should be important to you. Mike, can we just, A, the marina coming back on the.
Yeah, yeah, depending on what we hear from the, uh. I mean, prior of engineers. Uh, and what their disposition is, uh, we are anticipating based on the communication so far, favorable result. Uh, but yes, there'll be some next step to follow up on that, possibly we'll have something that are due in thirteen.
Right. You can have, uh, report the ball, switch boards and speeding meetings and many of the other patents, the nation's favor, the table, something really. Also, this is a declaration. Mike, can we do a little bit of anything?
I would take it, but it's made fair, right?
Oh, yeah, thanks, okay. Uh, I've not done this before, so I don't even know what I'm doing.
It'll do just fine.
Uh. So, uh, Chris is coming back to you back in October, I believe. I'm sorry, I just came from a little meeting. Anyways, back in the fall. Um. Main Street had made an occasion, if you will, to you to approve a social district area, um, on behalf of the Main Street in the downtown area with. Specifically defined outlines. And what this social district is, um, it is something, uh, regulated by the State of Michigan and upper mid State of Michigan, I should say. Um, where entities that have a proper liquor license within that district continues to that district. Would be allowed to sell, um, alcoholic beverages to, uh, legal adults. Um, in logo cups, leaving cups marked with the identification of the selling entity along with a social district. Label, um, and then folks would be able to consume those, uh, refreshments within that defined boundary. Part of what we have to do is, um, you approve the idea of a social district and allowing us to have one. Uh, two things have to happen, one is that we could, uh. Denote those boundaries of the districts with signage. We're ready to build with those, we're just waiting for this day to, um, give us the go ahead, put those up so that people know when they would be leaving the district. And secondarily, to come back to you to let you know that right now, um, nine of the ten, um, entities in town that would be allowed to. Are taking this because of the kind of legal license they have, would like to do so. So we are just bringing their names, excuse me, um, for. Your approval, that you understand that these entities here, as they're listed, um, would like to participate in this. What happens after this is we fill out a form for them. And provide it back to the, each of these entities, and they will then take that and apply to the state. There's a three hundred and fifty dollar fee plus seventy dollar processing fee. They will apply to the state and the state will say, yes, we recognize that you have the appropriate liquor license and yes, you may, um, serve this. Uh, the, the city of Boine City does comply with all the rules for the social district and yes, you may participate. And so this is just giving your okay to fill it in so that they can submit to the state. So we've already agreed to the concept of it, understanding that we have entities that, um, you know, would participate and we're bringing these back to you so that you can see who they are. The only one that is not included in this is the Eagles, and that is simply a timing thing. Um, I am going to be meeting with them on Thursday to answer their questions and, um, they also have the other kind of legal licenses they apply, but I will bring them to a separate meeting. And for that, it was well, it has, um, something they decided to pursue. But otherwise, um. Everyone here, uh, there, as. Have saw their applications to you, you both, um, is interested in doing this. Um, and I'm trying to, and we have a, the time, there's a time cutoff to in the social district. I think, I believe the tail end is ten, yeah, so it's not like this goes all night, it's not a twenty percent right there. But it is seven days a week. Um, we are required to, um, we will be putting all of the. Store fronts that engage in this, we have a sign that says that they can do this, and we obviously won't put that out there until they have the appropriate. Uh, approval from the State of Michigan, and we will be providing them with the social district logos from their cups. And we also will be, um, creating a little, like, handouts so that people understand what the rules are about using that. Um, we are required to have that on our website, and you do have that on a really creative website that explains the whole program. And the boundaries and, you know, everything else and what the rules are in a nice way. So, I'm, uh, here on behalf of Main Street asking for your early, early sign entities to, um, be able to apply to the state mission.
Thank you. Did you bring John?
And thank.
Any questions or from the audience or anywhere?
Okay, we better approach the, uh, there, uh, has. This, this, the oldest, the circle. Please chief weighed in on this. Um. Organization. This is why this one, that. I have two concerns, one would require that the, uh, cause for the bonus system to be placed. The visual that's gonna be placed on the police force, and secondly. The liability, I mean, I think that's pretty clear, people are gonna be inebriated, they're gonna be just walking in the streets in traffic. Right, nothing against that, necessarily, right? I haven't done that myself, but, so when someone gets hit or hits something, which is inevitably gonna happen, there's this third component. From a liability standpoint of who sold that person the drink. Right, who. In any way or shape or form, we'd be. liable. Or responsible. For the need to open up the channels to investigate.
That's right, that's awesome.
Oh, we have the chief right here, so, um. Sure, Kevin, they've included me on discussions, they're all for the meetings, I have spoken with chiefs throughout the state. I have yet to talk to one yet that's had a bad outcome from implementing this, um, several said they, they haven't noticed a difference in anything. Uh, what they are noticing is. The, uh, getting hubs that everybody's drinking water out of. All of a sudden becomes the. Bud light from the tap or the water, whatever, um, but they've had no issue at all, in places I've spoken, I've spoken to. Are more than twenty places in Michigan, they're chief, all went well.
And has, uh, the issue been reviewed by the city attorney?
Now that I'm aware.
Who's responsible, can you, please state the name, oh, can you, um, land, you know, three, ten, something true. Um, whose responsibility is it once they leave the premises of the bar or can or restaurant? Does it come to the city's responsibility if they were to trip and fall on the city sidewalk? Or is it one of the people that sold them the alcohol and how's that hiding with liquor liabilities? Does that extend over your premises?
Thank you, Ken, um, Kevin.
Mayor. During COVID, they did, uh, certainly, yeah, during COVID, LCC put out a. Change in the law that you can take liquor to go. And all through that, you've been able to take liquor to go, or drink to go, come to bar parks and drink. Um. There's been no question on that, I don't think. Once somebody leaves that establishment, that it puts any more burden on us or the liquor establishment. As it would it. As it operated already, um, same thing as if they drink it in the bar and then they walk out. It doesn't become our responsibility. Serving part goes back to. The liquor establishment as it always would, and then that becomes our issue with both liquor establishment. Determine how much they were served at their, if they were inebriated when they were being sold. Um. I don't see how that. Um. Amplifies our people's responsibility at all.
Right. Anyone else? Mission?
Uh, sure. Um, sort of, they continued to answer that, a little bit, um, ignorant, I'll tell you, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't just a, hey, this is a great idea, and then, you know, and then it just packed. Um. Uh, chief was included on, uh, a lot of that, uh, correspondence, the board met plenty of times on it. The, uh, I, I, I think, I think the difference where, uh, chief was going is that at least now. Uh, they're gonna, everyone who's cost, as they leave those establishments are gonna be, you know, have stickered from that establishment. And so I think that's a big difference in what's sort of happening now, to help you, whatever. Uh, and I, I think it's, uh, uh, again, the, the Main Street Board did an amazing job of, of not just being flitting on this. And, and, you know, talking to a lot of the different communities just like you did, and, uh, it, it was, there was just a lot of positive things. Hey, white, right, it's, it's part of what we know because the LCC has been rep rate of, uh, uh, rate of Main Street state of following, you know, signage and everything like that, so. Um, it's been, uh, um, they've been talking about this for quite a while and, um. Kind of like segue as the chief said from, from, uh, COVID into, uh. In, in something like this, I think it helps have a little bit more control on it quite frankly, than, uh, um, than just the, uh. Um. Well, he's gone, I, I use good old Larry, Larry's car, you know, driving up and down. Was cooler behind you, so at least we got a little bit more, I, I think there's a little bit more, uh, little bit more of it. So.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Mike.
No, I agree, Barney, that, that we have vetted this off quite thoroughly, it, it's an effort to, on behalf of Main Street, we have supported. By, uh, at this point, that it's an effort to enhance our downtown of Biker City with. With, uh, creating. A positive business opportunities for, for our residents. And, um. I'm, I've been supportive from the beginning, and I still am supportive, and let's give it a try. It hasn't been successful in many cities.
Yeah, I'm full support, as it states in the memo, and October eleven, twenty twenty two, the city commission had, had this come to them. Um, so it wasn't anything that started last week or a month ago, it's something that's been vetted very well. Um, prior to October eleventh, twenty twenty two, you know, more than half a year ago. Main Street was working on it for some time before it came to the city commission again, but it did very well, they're not re-invetting the wheel, they've looked to other. Municipal governments instead of doing this as examples, um. Chief has weighed in on it several times in this last half plus year that we've been discussing this. All the concerns have been validated or invalidated at this point, so I'm in full support.
Uh, you can add that couple of questions, so, um. On page two of your memo, uh, there, you say that, uh, if stores do not want simple volume into their business, there's gonna be a sign. Is that a sign gonna be provided by Main Street, is this signed in every system throughout the community?
We're allowing the stores to do what they like, they love something from last week over by their club then.
And you've done a really great job of building sentences without, with the, uh, bars and disposal of the liquor license. Have you gone home to those other businesses who are gonna have to deal with? You know, people wanting to drop alcohol to make sure they're comfortable with it, and what this kind of standard procedures they should go through there, if there's any kind of an issue?
I think that for many of them, they already have procedures established, you know, even just for bringing in a water bottle. Um, and so have I gone to all of them that would be impacted by this? No, have I talked with many of them? You know, that this will be happening? Yes, you know, and, um, one of the things that we do say in particular on the website and in the handout. Is that we want folks to be respectful of every individual business and what they do. Um, you know, so that we wouldn't, whether it's this drink or, you know, a bottle of water, that they be respectful of the individual businesses.
Um, the other thing, so it runs in seven to nine P M, Baywood, is it a year round or is it?
Year round, yes.
And, uh.
And if you don't mind my projecting, that it goes from May one until. April thirty, so we're just a titch behind, but every year these businesses would reapply. And the goal would be that, um, next year we would bring this to like in March, right? You know, to make sure that everyone can participate again so that we're ahead of the curve so that they can be ready to go on May one and have that full year. But it's an annual thing.
So if there are issues that we don't anticipate that arise and doesn't work out, yeah, I tend to do that. And signage, are there, is it a set of signs or is it going to be, you know, by your signage, uh, waiting for it to just port into?
It's a combination of both, um, because we're required to put it, um, technically at all anywhere where we might walk out of the district. Um, and I think probably, uh. As well, you know, that's another opportunity next year for us to look at what that district looks like and what's appropriate. Um, this is the one that was approved, so that's what we're working with, um, but I think a really good example would be there by, um. The Blenz Plaza, the Global Street right there, both of those sidewalks, but sorry, family bear, sorry, sorry. Um, uh, okay, it's always going to be Blenz, we want to. Both of those sidewalks lead out of the district and there really isn't anything right there that we can fix a sign to. So we're keeping something that's kind of, you know, it's smallish, so it's not, and anywhere that we can take advantage of, um. Like a light pole that we own or something like that, we're doing that so that, you know, we're not, um, you know. But we're going to make them as innocuous as we can and then. Um, utilize light bolts and different things where else that we can, but we're required to put them on the exits to. You know, under that social district.
Good, thank you.
I have two just two other questions. So when you made the comment in regards to the Eagles participating, did they not have any participants participating this year?
So, no, they do, and we hope to get that rolling, um, but because of their structure and they were turning over their board. The old board didn't want to engage the, for something, you know, and make the new board agree to it, so they wanted to, um. They want us to meet with the new folks who are now in place and ready to go. Um, I'm not typically available on Sunday, and so the day we could finally agree on was this coming Thursday. Um, and so they, it was just really a timing thing.
So they still have an opportunity?
Yes, we've been in discussion with them, like I've been in full fledged discussion with them for eight weeks, but the, the biggest thing is. Yes, we can bring them separately to, you know, given if all this goes well, um, we can bring them in a separate amount for the same sort of thing and then they can apply. They just need the, the approved piece of paperwork from us before any of these guys can apply to the state.
Got it.
So it was just really a timing thing for them, and I would hope after Thursday that they would have their questions answered and we would be bringing them as well. Don't want me to.
All right. Yeah, go.
Anyone else?
I'll make a moment that the city commission approved the required resolution approving the applications of each of the following businesses necessary to participate. The Point City Main Street Sultan District. For this season and offer as a city clerk treasurer to complete and return an appropriate resolution for each of the establishments. Their approval is for the following establishments only, the Point City Tap Room. At located at two twenty South Lake Street, Point River Inn located at two twenty-nine Water Street. Capesante located at one Water Street. Lake Street Pub located at two oh two South Lake Street, Muscat Stilling located at one twenty-one Water Street. Provisions Wine Bar located at one twenty-three Water Street, Red Mesa located at one seventeen Red Mesa. This is Water Street, yeah, and one seventeen Water Street direction, State's Brewing Company, one twelve South Park Street. Sunnyside located at one thirteen Gris Street.
It's been you. Did you respect?
All right.
Need further discussion? Roll call, do you just?
I'm glad.
Bye.
Booney.
Bye.
Bye.
Yeah, chat.
Bye.
Won't you care?
Thank you.
All right, moving to new commitments. Between nine A and twenty twenty-three, annual report on the top of the one three house commission. Presentation by Beth and Miss Tack, one's the new housing commission executive director.
Hello. Um. I'm going to ask her, do you want me to go through reading the entire thing? Is that how you want it for final two?
We've all had the opportunity to read it, so they're just saying, I'm in the black line, maybe you can read that for me, try to read it with the justice. If weren't the highlights and.
Perfect, thank you, uh, this would be my first one, so I'll turn around and do all that. Um, so I'm definitely attached to that, because I get very careful with Wednesday House of Commission, and I'm here to do our annual report. Um, it's on our fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, the audit and financial statements are now at the city, um, I sent those this morning, I apologize, they were not here before this. Uh, so we were created in nineteen sixty-seven by the city, uh, we have been around for quite a long time, it's, I'm here. Um, we are a public, uh, government entity, we have five board members, uh, currently we are down two. So if we have anyone that you know of that's looking for, uh, would like to be our board commissioners, we'd be happy to accept an application. Um, fiscal year is October first to September thirtieth, um, and then we have. Elizabeth Reckless, Deer Meadows is another entity that we run and we manage, but we also have twenty-six houses on Winona, here is. Jersey Jefferson, uh, Maine and First. Um, so one of the things we also do is we have sixty-three housing twice vouchers. That are used for the county, uh, sometimes can be taken out of the county. Uh, those vouchers allow someone to pay thirty percent of their income or rent if they can't afford. Um, a standard apartment anywhere that fits our payment standards, um. So our financial reports for twenty twenty-two audit were that we, um, basically don't find names. That's the best thing that you can receive from the auditor, um, that we're doing in, in. Good shape and the most exciting thing I feel out of ours was our worst pension funding level is eighty-six percent. Um, back in twenty nineteen, it was at fifty-eight percent, so that's been a very great. Jump and, um, very important that we've gotten that to that point, we're hoping with the next couple of years that it really takes, uh. Um, gets closer to a hundred percent. Um, accomplishments, so we have had a lot of updates that we've done to our houses, to our units. Anytime we have a vacant unit, we try to do anything we can do in-house, um, to update the units. Um, we would welcome anyone that would like to tour a vacant, if, you know, anyone would be interested, please let us know, we'd be happy to take tours. Um, with the burger, we have lots of imploring, updates needed, we just installed a new security camera system at the burger. Um, so a couple of large accomplishments was the FAS score, which is Public Housing Assessment System. For our last score was ninety-seven out of a hundred, so we're considered a high performer. Um, that is a assessment of pretty much everything that has to do with us, I mean, they look at the files. We have to do some of that internally, and then most importantly of that is a physical inspection. Um, they come in, they inspect a variety of units, including all the common areas, and we were able to receive a ninety-seven percent on that, which is. If you fail that inspection, it's very difficult to get a high performer. Um, high performer basically means that we're able to receive extra funding every year to do that. Uh, which of course then adds to our ability to get more to the residents. Um, for our voucher program, what's called CMAT, we received a hundred out of a hundred for that. Um, so we're considered a high performer, that means that all of the different components of managing our program, we were right where we're supposed to be. Um, that because we're high performers, that means that we have three years that we will have to do another, um, assessment. So it takes a lot of the burden off of us also, but we're able to score it. Um, so challenges is providing the same level of services that we can with the reduced funding from HUD. Um, one of the newest things that just came out today is with the debt ceiling, um, they're talking going back to twenty. Nineteen or twenty twenty HUD funding, which all the extra we've received in the last couple of years will go away. So not take from them now, but it won't get any in the future. Um, that is why many, um, housing authorities are converting our public housing, which we are looking at doing. Um, because we do not get a consistent amount of money every year, it's very difficult to budget, it's, it's, uh. We never know, last, last year we got a hundred eighty-four thousand per capital fund, we got to save this year, the year before it was like a hundred and fifty thousand. And before that was like eighty thousand or something, there's no consistency. Um, and also HUD is always multiple months behind on what we get, so for instance, for voucher. We get a number based on what we paid four months ago. So we might have issued four new vouchers and we have to hope we have the money to pay for those new vouchers because they're going to take part in the catch-up. Um, so there's just some big problems, but luckily we've been able to keep, um, running the right way. Um, so some major changes the residents and the community are going to have come down is policies relating to tenant income. Expenses, inspections, um, it's called HAPMA, which is the Housing O有机会through Modernization Act. Um, that was basically HUD's way of trying to streamline a lot and a couple of the major points of it. Without getting into the weeds, but one thing that will change is the way that we certify tenants. And one of the biggest parts is, say, you move in and you don't have any income today and your rent is twenty dollars. And then three months later, you finally find a job that's really good and you're able to succeed. You tell us about that, but for that first year, we don't recertify you until you're next to the end wall. So you basically will have money in your pocket, which right now they have to recertify and their rent goes up. So that will, that's one of the ways HUD's trying to help people get on their feet and what I call up and out. Get up and then be able to buy a house or live in a fifteen hundred dollar home, right? Um, where they can do that, um, where there's a lot of rule changing to that though, a lot. I mean, we have to update and re, and change ninety percent of our houses. And that all has to be done by January first of twenty-four, so we welcome any volunteers that wants to read a lot of pieces of paper. And then, so community support, uh, because of donations made by the friends of the Main Street Library. We're ready to create a library on site, we have, we welcome any, anybody that wants to visit, um, we have a couple of residents that maintain that. Um, Ed and New, uh, also does their breakfast in the spring and dinner in the fall. Um, one thing I forgot to put on here is that Stig's does the Thanksgiving dinner every year, um, they come and distribute. Um, commodities and tea pack are done every month and quarter for the residents, that's food that's given to them. Um, you can food shops, Project Fresh, uh, the last two years, we've had the Lindzen Burger Meyer family along with Buynavad Lions and Chef Cole. Um, from the hospitality class presented the residents with an annual holiday party. Um, this year we were, this last year we were able to actually have the dinner and it was packed, I mean, you couldn't even get in the room. Um, the year before that, we did it, um, where they handed them one door to door, the residents are, it's, it's very nice, um. And then many other things that we've done, and then we also in the summer have our annual meeting. That we have now, um, joined with the Lions and done where they serve, we have it, and then last year we actually did a live meeting at the time. Try to get people to get involved in the community, uh, we welcome any other organizations that want to work with us, it just happens that. I am also a Buynavad lion, so it kind of works. Um, so qualifications for renters, uh, a lot of this will be changing, so I'm not going to go over a lot of it, but, um. You pretty much have to meet a certain threshold. Of income, that's the most important, background is not as important as it used to be, um. So if you know people that are looking for housing, if they have something on their background, send them to us, we will look at it, we're not, uh, automatically done. There's only a few criteria that they would never be able to put their house. Um, and then. Rent rates are thirty percent of their income, um, across the board. So that is their gross income, sometimes that's difficult for people to understand that it's not their actual check, it's what they get before their check. Um, everything is verified on a regular basis. And then when HAPMA changes again, all that will be changing. Uh, funding, we receive multiple types of funding, our rent, our operating grant for HUD, capital fund, our housing payments, our administrative fees. And then we have a fee for service to manage Deer Meadows, and then we also receive laundry income cable and neighbors charges. Um, from January first of twenty-two to May first of twenty-three, we had fourteen of ours, so very consistent, um. Sometimes we, we have a lot less in many months, like the last three months, we've had nobody, and then now we've got. Coming up, so it just, it really fluctuates. Um, and then we have just, uh, we're about to sign a contract with, uh, Rad Conversion Consultants. For our consultant and co-developer to start the process of converting our public housing, um, and. Um, looking at some of our, our vacant land and seeing what we can do for our future. Um, we will be making all of that public and coming to many meetings, you'll see me a lot, I'm not getting very comfortable at the beginning here, um, and. Any ideas that the board, city commission has, the public has, we welcome them, if you want to see something specifically for housing. We are, we've taken it as our responsibility to try to fix the problem and that's what we're going to do. Um, and then I also put on here our contact, again, we have two vacant commissioners. We're also looking for an office person, uh, creating manager or another assistant, anyone who needs that job or, or. Um, or does anybody that is. So other than that, we're.
Well, thank you, Bethany. Anyone in the audience with questions or comments?
I'm seeing Richard five, six, Main Street, I'm sorry, the, you said something at the very end about your working with someone who worked at your event. I wondered if you were, who that was and what.
So right now we're in the beginning phases of a consulting and co-developer and kind of seeing what our options are. It's called, uh, Rad Conversion Consultants, we haven't signed a contract with them yet, but we're looking at options because we can't just build on it. We have to do some other things first, so, um, that's where we're at with it right now. Uh, we have no plans at this moment, we have no idea what's going on, we have, we're very back at the beginning, back before any other director has done anything. We're starting all over. So Rad and Conversion Consultants, yes, yeah.
How did you find them?
Uh, we did a request proposal and they had a finding for them.
Anyone else?
We should, we have anything for Bethany, when? What, I just said, but the, uh, uh, so. Part of that, what Sandy's question was, was, you know, building on the land up there, like what you have. But what, is that the whole converting thing, or are you, you talking about taking some of the houses that you manage and turning those over?
So part of what we're looking at is how can we get money for that land? And so one of the things we have to do is convert our public housing out of public housing, so that it's not the way it is currently. It'll still be, the residents won't really know the difference as far as the burger. Now the houses, we have a couple of opportunities, we're not really sure how we want to do that, so I don't want to put anything out there quite yet, but I would say. Um, anything we can do to primarily keep the residents where they are, as safe as they are and have housing, that is our goal. And that means that we have to build something else to move them there first. If we offer them the opportunity to build or to buy, there's, there's opportunities we have, we have no plans of removing. Anything from our portfolio, if anything, we're looking at moving into the county. I mean, we're talking bigger, not smaller, um, one of the communications we've had in the past was that. The city really wanted to see us. Keep management over us, over our own. One of the parts of this convergence will require with the task credit application, a property management company will have to be involved. But we will still maintain property management control, so they will come in and do like the back of the house compliance stuff. And I don't foresee them, um, needing any more than that, um, obviously they'll be available for us if we wanted to add, they could. But we are not taking away any of our, um, hands on the way we've gotten where we're at. Uh, the houses, it's, it's a big opportunity, we don't know the options, that's why we hired a consultant, and that's also going to move. Uh, the houses, it's it's a big opportunity. We don't know the options. That's why we hired a consultant, and that's also gonna move it forward. We don't have. Um, they're gonna do a lot of that upfront work and pay for it, so that we, they're gonna get that money in the end. So it's gonna incentivize them to do that.
No, I think my guy would be um addressing the waiting list is is how long it'll be.
Oh man, um, and so for vouchers, we have, I think when we look today, we have forty-five people who are on our waitlist. Part of the thing with voucher waitlist is they don't want to go. We we've got two vouchers right now. We have more to put down.
Right.
Um, Deer Meadows, I think twenty-ish was about Deer Meadows. Um, that is a release with fifty-five dollars early. Um, and then Littenberger. That was a little smaller. We've had a lot of people kind of not respond. It's probably about twenty twenty-five. Um, and then our family housing, that is, I think we have fifteen. But they've been on the waitlist for a long time, a long time. I mean, there's, and we have preference points too. So the people that have been on there a long time, other people get moved above that because of the preference points. So they just keep going down. We're looking at reviewing our uh our waiting that we do with, so that maybe it opens up a little bit more. The our waitlist is, we get calls, I would say probably ten a week that say I need housing now. And I have to say, we have a waitlist. I apologize. So it's very difficult. And then another thing is people that we, I mean, any accessible units um that we don't have. They're available before. We just don't have good ones, especially houses. We have one in a head of us. And so we've got someone that's been looking for it, um and we don't have this one.
Yeah, so so my point is we have a waiting list, we have a need and a desperate need and. For uh income base and for other things, and we have a property, so you know, I personally would support you. In your efforts to keep moving forward, the long-term goal, drive more housing under your umbrella.
Thank you. And can I add one real quick thing? Um, one of my biggest goals, and I've heard from coming in, what the community has felt over the years. About the property, about the feeling of what they wanna see. And we, our goal is that we will incorporate group spaces of that property. We will and not just have people in. That is not our goal because we need it to be quality avoidant too. Not just quantity of a goal. So even that's why I said, okay, if we can't put them all on the property, why can't we move into the county? Why can't we go into township? Why can't we, once we're not a public housing agency in the normal way we are right now, once we convert, we can. So eventually that's our goal is, you know, there's really no limit to what we, that's kind of how I've been looking at it anyways. So.
Anything else? No, great job.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the review. Um, I don't have any questions. Pretty self-explanatory if you want yourself through. Um, I'd just like to give you two shout-outs with the MERS pension funding. Um, it's impressive, but at fifty-eight percent in two thousand nineteen and being close to ninety percent. On the short period later, and also for your ratings on our former and being able to secure additional funding due to those ratings to help our unit. So thank you for that.
Um, I'm pretty sure that when Jane McKenzie was here, she put a large influx, I think it was like. Ten or twenty thousand dollars down into it. And then they also, we have a. Can't remember the name of it. There's an extra amount that we do on top every month. It's like twenty-five hundred a month that we also do in addition to it. Um, because that, first of all, we didn't wanna send reports to the state every year. I mean, that's where we put things out to. Um, I was just wanting to get that funded and we have a lot of people retiring now. Our, you know, Cindy Porter was our program manager. She just retired, which um we just promoted uh Morgan, who we up to the program manager. She's doing an amazing job. Um, but again, that's another person retiring and a lot more money that we need to put towards retirement, you know?
Are you guys still, um, do you still have a burden of funding to worry about?
Yeah, but we have no plans on removing it from future employees. Um, or for our employees, as long as we can afford it, we'll have it. So right now, yeah. That's why I said we're up, we're hiring.
Well, then, yeah, I know you're getting nervous in front of a group, but you kind of, you did a great job.
Yes.
Very strong presentation and as you work with the development of the property, especially very important to make sure that the whole. It's incorporated and reached out and it's transparent and creative and wow, good luck with that.
Thank you. And one thing I wanna share is we are in the middle of updating our website. And part of that is everything will be on there. All of our meetings will be, um, the documents will be out there. That's our goal is to get it all out there in case people can't come to the machines. Um, and that will include things to do with property. Um, the, at least the beginning stages until it's created, that it may not be a public entity at that point. But in the beginning, we plan on being as transparent as we possibly can because we need the support of the community, especially the commissioners, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you, Benny.
Thank you.
My issue request?
Hi, it's on analyst. That's okay. Uh, at their uh April sixth meeting uh of the Park and Recreation Commission. Uh, the pickleball user group members presented the commission with a proposal to modify the two remaining tennis courts in Rory Park. By overlaying pickleball court lines onto them to allow two temporary pickleball courts per tennis court. There was a good number of pickleball players uh that were present supporting the request. Originally in Rory Park, there were four single-use tennis courts. A few years ago, the two westernmost tennis courts were converted into four permanent pickleball courts. In conjunction, and this was all in conjunction with the rehabilitative courts. The third uh tennis court from the west has been dual-strike for use as a single tennis or pickleball court. Uh, using the existing net for either of those uses. Uh, the fourth and eastern malls court remains part just for tennis use. The commission was presented with comments and letters from multiple tennis players in the community who were against this proposal. One suggested the creation of more pickleball courts at other locations in the park, but now by sacrificing additional tennis. It was suggested by the Parks and Recreation Commission that the pickleball and tennis players form a joint committee. To assist uh with communication between the groups and the possible development of a joint recommendation. At the subsequent May fourth Park and Recreation Commission meeting, members of the pickleball user group were present to follow up on their advice. They had not yet met with any uh of the tennis players to start a conversation regarding forming a joint committee. Uh, the following motion was made and approved by all of the Park and Recreation Commission members present. Uh, it was moved by conference, supported by pre-direct and asked unanimously to recommend to the city commission. Not approve the further conversion of the last remaining tennis courts Rory Park into two pickleball place. Uh, multi-use courts. So that was the motion and the recommendation is that the city commission does not approve further conversion. Converting the last remaining tennis court that Rory Park into multi-use courts. And we included with the memo, there was a sketch uh that was provided by tennis enthusiasts. Uh, showing uh basically uh north and a little bit east of the existing courts. Uh, in some of the wooded area, some areas where there could possibly be some additional pickleball uh courts at some point in the future. And uh then there was uh the striking of courts. Uh, for pickleball and or tennis. The court on the left is pretty much how a third court over from the west is currently configured. Uh, with the, with it being able to be used uh for both tennis and pickleball. And then the 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 pickleball group presented the the vision on the uh, I know, right? As how they would like to see things potentially restrict. But again, the recommendation from our Recreation Commission to this commission is basically the thing that is there.
Any comment from?
I'm the one named, oh, it's Teddy. Sure, your name Teddy's up. Let's hear it, isn't it? Uh, I'm the one to be the uh little guy around there who's on the board. Um, I am both a tennis and pickleball enthusiast. And um I reached out to um a couple of other people that are both tennis and pickleball enthusiasts. So we can get a good draw from both sides, be able to work together um to have a long-term program. Um, a long-term vision of what Boyne City will look like with both tennis and pickleball courts. Um, we have a gentleman that is volunteered his time. That has spent his whole life in pickleball and tennis and racket sports, Danny Green. Um, he uh managed uh and built a court up at uh Burchway in Harper Springs. Um, he also ran as a sports peddler, if you guys remember that back in the day, um for twenty-five years. And um so he is the one that will be getting um information as far as the costs and things like that. He's also uh in the lead in the task. So this kind of dovetails with what tasking. He lives in Harper Springs, so you can imagine he's been very um integral and uh vast knowledge of. How pickleball court and tennis courts can be both used in the same areas of that area. So um he's also done the work of Boyne Mall. Uh, so um we're looking for some um, some other people to um join the group. Uh, they can contact me. Um, um. And we're, once we start getting some information, some special costs and things like that. Then we'll be able to have something more, be able to bring it back to you. But the idea is long-term, where we, where we are today, where we want to be in the future. And um any information, any assistance, um I will be, you know, very, very happy here. And uh any other comments from anyone, this is greatly appreciated. And thank you.
I guess we have a good problem because we have so many enthusiasts, pickleball enthusiasts, well, or I. And they're all being outside and getting exercise and it's really taken off the pickleball enthusiasts. Um, not only locally but nationally. Um, so that, that's kind of good to see that. I am very, also, I agree with the Parks and Rec. That I don't, I think we're too premature to turn the two remaining tennis courts into pickleball courts. I kind of like Ken's vision that we have a long-term vision and and possibly that will include building more courts. But to convert at this point, I think we're shortchanging the tennis players, even though there's not at this point. It's gonna be a big tennis player, it's a pickleball player, but still I think we need to respect the tennis courts there. Um. I think it's very feasible, exactly what Ken's saying, is create some informed people and create. A vision and cost analysis and add more courts. Obviously, that's gonna be money, but um. You know, if we have, if we have that, we can ban that. So I I I just, I think. It's slow, slowed down a little bit right now. Uh, I was out there Sunday night, there were twenty-six, I mean, uh, Sunday night, there were twenty-six adults playing. And the kind of sports began to be, but that doesn't mean we should convert, I think. It it's, it's the potential to keep improving our facilities, citywide. And we need a long-term vision and plan this together. And Ken, and.
So just so I understand the whole scenario, essentially wanting to convert the last two uh tennis courts over to dual pickleball courts. Would run into the potential ability of, so the Sunday, even with there's twenty-six pickleball users. One court sitting empty that has a dedicated tennis court, I'm assuming the requests, so then the other twenty-six. Pickleball users have more usability instead of that be court sitting there. Is there a structure on these dates and times? Or is it just a free draw?
I I can answer that, but I think maybe Peter, but they are very organized. They have a morning league, they have the afternoon league, they, they have, so they have four courts, they're playing four. So that takes up twenty-four. Two people were sitting, they rotated, played two games. And and there's a challenge racket. I mean, again, this is not in my league. I shouldn't be the spokesperson for this group. They are very organized.
So I guess you or Pete speak up whenever, um. Dual utilization of that, they're converted over to the, the both lines, pickle and tennis, could they not be dual utilized?
Yes, uh, Pete Freerick, four-one-five-nine street. Uh, what happens is there are a number of tennis players that come out and play. And when you see the lines on the court when it's dual pickleball court.
Yeah.
Extremely mattered the tennis player determine what line is where. The other thing is that there's a lot of enthusiasts uh that play pickleball. We're finding out that a small number of this large group actually lives within the city. And we wanna keep a tennis court open, pure court for tennis players when they come out. Happens now, tennis, pickleball players will be on the third court, it might be explained that strike for pickleball. When tennis players come out, there's a place for them to play. There's somebody in the last remaining court. It was a tough decision. We had a tough decision. We had a lot of people there for pickleball, and also we had a lot of people there for tennis. That don't wanna see us give up that last court.
Thirty-nine requests on the Parks and Recreation Board was simply to allow a sense of fairness of utilization.
Yeah, it's like, it's like in Jake Mordery, you say, okay, softball's your big sport, and baseball, baseball, baseball. It's down, convert long softball, giving up that last court essentially because of anything.
Okay.
And Ken's proposal of adding a spot court looks really good.
Is that something that as far as the Parks Recreation Board has an interest in doing that, as he brought that to the table?
Yes.
Okay.
Boyne Mall is in the process of looking at converting their tennis courts. Um, in the pickleball court, so there's getting more courts around you. They just don't wanna give up that last tennis court. You're good.
Gotcha. And essentially, Ken, you're representing a group of pickleball players?
I'm representing both. Um, I just bought all my kids' pickleball, my kids' balls. Um, I love pickleball. I also play tennis. Obviously, pickleball's new, right? So the new sport, I'm a racket sport mechanic, I play pickleball. Um, and uh I used to play racket long in the past. And uh there's platform tennis. So there's a number of racket sports, and this is the newest one. And um uh it's a great sport. Anyone from six years old to ninety-six can play it. And it's a great social program. Um, but like Pete said, there's still contingency, quite a contingency of of tennis players. In addition to that, we have a four-H uh that um uh actually I uh helped start twenty years ago. That has a four-H tennis uh program that's put on, I believe, by the tennis coach from a couple, points in the south, a couple of years ago. She's maintained the four-H program. The problem is, when you put lines down to your question, when you put lines down. And you're trying to teach little kids, you're impossible to do. Um, if. It wasn't um fully understood that they were gonna completely convert the other two courts over. Um, Boyne City High School, those were originally built because Boyne City tore down the tennis courts at. Boyne City High School property, and they moved them to Rory Park for the tennis team. I played out of the sports when I was in high school. Um, those were specifically for that. Now, Boyne Mall's been gracious enough to let our team play out there. But the girls and the guys still practice in Boyne City, but now they're down to one court. You cannot play tennis on a dual-purpose court. It's not allowed by USC or by um either USC or by ISU. Um, so it's kind of limiting. We're gonna, we're possibly running a problem where Boyne Mall says, yeah, we're done. We're gonna tear down that sport or whatever we do. Now we have no play, now we're forced to. Now we would have no play, now we'd be forced to put in new tennis court, to buy one tennis courts in Boyne City. So that the, the, the sport can be played, as well as four-H utilizing those courts to teach tennis. Now, I'd like to see pickleball be brought up with four-H also, that'd be more happy to help start that. Um, but I would love to be able to say, okay, we're going to teach, you know, four-H pickleball down here. And then we're going to be able to um, teach tennis down here. And then we would have, again, a long-term plan of having both in that area. Because the vast majority of racket sports are duly played by both tennis and pickleball. Uh, there are, you know, quite a few pickleball players that should have played pickleball, but most tennis players will play pickleball.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's, if, I just, I'm just really excited about the future of both sports here in Boyne City. Um. And I'm just, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm looking to go forward with the long-term plan and be able to present it to this board in the future and, and with um, uh, sports around.
Okay. All right, I got an understanding. Thanks for that explanation, Ken.
Right. Yeah, um, a lot of good conversation, I appreciate a lot of what Don said. Um, I, yeah, I'm in full support of the uh, uh. Parks and Rec, because I, I, I do believe that uh, um, you know, it, it's been such a new thing. And it's been such a push, and, and, and we've had to just let it take it over, just bang, boom, bang. And uh, so I, I think it did need to slow down a little bit, and I really give Parks and Rec a lot of, you know, credit for, you know, looking at it completely. And uh, you know, it's only money, we can always build more courts, but we got, there's issues there too. Um, thanks, and uh, I, I believe it's the right uh, decision, and uh, I have no problem with it.
I think, but as you saw, I'm supporting beating the one tennis court. We did have a, you know, you raised a good question, there's in the rooms full. We had an efficient seventy-five state nature time for tennis players. Uh, I remember a lot about pickleball, this has happened throughout our country, everywhere, there's pressure on tennis courts and. Pickleball courts and uh, this uh, drawing, can't present, you know, it's really. To the future that we have, I think, that it's a very large sport. I should never listen when we drive by there and say, oh, we have tennis players that created earlier. Uh, and then we're, pickleball courts in full, I, you know, I had a chat with some this morning at eight thirty-five, I was paying for the court. Uh, racket or pickleball courts. No, they're one thirty this morning. It is kind of clustered, it is a social thing, they're all, it's all, it all started down southwest in the town, the communities apparently, or really drawn up. You know, it's just something that uh, is going to need to be addressed and. If not the opportunity, I think, if we didn't move forward to talk about in Parks and Rec Village. Because uh, it was really interesting with the commission, uh, one of the commission, Parks and Rec Commission members, uh. Very good, you know, property and where people did have seventy-five names with the tenants. Uh, four location points to, you know, there's outside here, so there is pressure happening. You know, finding funding source that you're, you know, being creative and how we solve this. Is there a motion that needs to be made? Um. The group recommendation, yeah, is that someone will, I want you to approve. Person rec- recommendation.
Yeah, I think I want you to, I want to say, I want to make a decision.
Murray, Morgan, Jessica, Tim supported that. Any further discussion? Well, call please, Jessica.
Lily.
Hi.
Nina.
Hi.
Nina.
Hi.
Camden.
Hi.
What's your name?
Thank you. Eight Park, Spark, Range, requests. Anyone here who can turn that down for us, we're fine, are you good?
I'll be glad to. As the commission will recall, uh, permission was previously uh, provided to allow. Skate park to be developed in an undeveloped wooded portion of Rotary Park. South of the tennis slash pickleball courts that we're just talking about. Uh, the skate, uh, skate park users group uh, previously was granted permission by the city commission. To work with the city and apply for a three hundred thousand dollar Michigan Spark Grant. That grant application was submitted but not approved. And the main court media, the Park and Recreation Commission, uh, skate park users group member, Greg Vennel. Uh, presented the commission with a, a new request to apply for a second round of the Michigan Spark Grant. In the amount of thirty thousand dollars. And before the skate park users group would complete the application and provide any proposed match. Applications are due on June twenty-sixth. Uh, Parks and Recreation Commission has agreed to support the skate park users group grant request. Uh, and to recommend uh, its approval to the city commission. Uh, the skate park users group has begun preliminary work to prepare the site in Rotary Park for the skate park. And to have a site professionally surveyed. The motion was made, supported and approved by all the Park and Recreation Board members present, commission members present, excuse me. Except for Greg, who was saying it. So the recommendation to the city commission uh, is that the city commission approve the recommendation of the Park and Recreation Commission. To approve the request of the Spark, the skate park users group to apply for a second round of Spark Grant. In the amount of thirty thousand dollars, uh, with them completing the application material. And providing any uh, net thirty, shoots a match fund. And authorized the city manager and city fair treasurer to execute the necessary documents uh, to apply for and accept the grant uh, awarded.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd be glad to try and answer any questions, uh, with your direction.
Any comments or questions from the audience?
I do have a comment. Um, I'm here in Eric Crown, not resident of Boyne City, but I have worked on newer Spark Grants for communities. And I just want to clarify, Mike, the grant request amount of thirty thousand dollars. Um, in a first round was three hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Uh, my understanding, well, the minimum grant amount for this funding source is one hundred thousand dollars. So this project would not be able to hold that thirty thousand dollars. And it's also my understanding, if you apply round one, you cannot change the scope for the uh, budgets for round two application. So you have to submit the same project, if you had round one, you could provide additional information, uh, to kind of gain more points. Um, but you'd have to go on with the same scope and cost. Comment for you.
What's all the particular?
Yeah, that's something like, right, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I might have been good to.
Yeah, I would do that too, because that was the proposal presented by the skate park users group request with regards to it. We're relying on them to, to the background, certainly. Uh, we still have an opportunity to bring this back to the city commission meeting to answer your June thirteen treaty. If they still wanted to try and apply for the one-sixth that I gave you.
Um, issues that we're going to keep. Yeah, I'll make a motion to give support. Any other kind of way you can about what this owner? I've learned just, but it goes to other. All right, um, well, call.
Nina.
Hi.
Nina.
Hi.
Camden.
Hi.
Lily.
Hi.
What's your name?
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah. You got pillows though?
Okay, using another, I invited the twenty twenty degree M dot category refunding application.
Well, we should do better on this one, since the expert that helped us to prepare the application is right here to follow that, and commented on the last one. Uh, thanks for the city commission review and consideration are materially prepared by our consulting engineers, C two A and Adam Taylor. Uh, regarding opportunities uh, to apply for Michigan Department of Transportation and category grant funds. That could be used to help maintain the number of acres in the city. Also provided is information from uh, M dot that, that describes this program. Uh, based on previous city road quality, P S R ratings. C two A outlining preliminary listing of roads that could benefit from maintenance work, and also qualify for grant uh, funding. Uh, we have applied for this funding in the past for the full reconstruction of projects like Lincoln, Cedar and Elm Streets. Uh, the projects being presented today are a series of smaller preservation projects. Meant to extend the life of pavement, uh, which would uh, for which uh, full reconstruction would be necessary. The estimated life extensions of these streets would be between three and seven years, as noted uh, per the. Each street, I mean, attached to page summary that's written in the map uh, in the packet. The goals are to get the maximum life out of the roads, preserve uh, the quality of the road, and reduce our overall local maintenance costs. By changing from full reconstruction to preservation project, we are hoping to be more successful in our grant applications. Uh, the ones in Lincoln and Cedar and Elm Streets were not approved for funding. Uh, the commission could apply for funding any or all of the seven uh, road projects outlined in the attached materials. If successful, these projects would be bid out over the winter for the twenty twenty-four uh, construction season. There is sufficient money in our road budget uh, to cover the engineering for this year. If all projects were approved for grant funding, uh, the balance necessary to construct the projects would come out of next year's budgets. And are in line with the amounts that we uh, have spent in those areas in previous years. Uh, applications for these funds uh, for the, these funds during this year's cycle are due June fifteenth. Uh, it's the recommendation of staff that the city commission review the roads and preservation estimates prepared. By D two A D for possible M dot uh, category grant funding. And authorize uh, C two A D and city staff to prepare and submit a grant application request. Of two hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the estimated total project cost. Of two hundred, or five hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And I'll bring up the map that shows the uh, road segments that are being proposed. Review. And obviously Eric is here from C two A D, uh, they have a memo and a lot of detail with regards to uh, this in the commission. Uh, packet as well, so he's here to, to address any questions or anything I may have missed. Eric?
Good afternoon, commissioners, um. Let's summarize it pretty well, uh, this would add a couple more things, uh, this funding source is through M dot, Michigan Department of Transportation. It's totally eligible for communities, uh, small communities, ten thousand people or less. Um, they can fund uh, road, you know, reconstruction projects, but they have, they place a priority on what's considered preventative maintenance. And extending the use of service life of existing roadways instead of having to go through the whole reconstruction process. So as Mike mentioned previously, cities kind of have a culture construction projects. Uh, have been successful getting this funding, so we are taking a little different approach. Uh, try and focus in on the priorities of the funding source and develop this preventative maintenance program. Where we would be doing um, on some of the streets, like uh, Vogel, Manny Lane, um. I think uh, Front Street, uh, those would be a chip seal, a fog seal, preventative maintenance application where they are spreading. A chip seal, really spread like a fine aggregate across the roadway, filling all the holes. Uh, kind of smooth it out and then apply a little bit of emulsion asphalt on the top of the fine aggregates to create, you know, a. A new roadway surface. And then on Front Street, right downtown, and Park Street, going through downtown, we would do a. Uh, single mill overlay, that's a little different technique for preventative maintenance where they grind off like the top. Inch of existing pavement and then replacing new pavement, uh, you know, a new course of pavement. That does have a little bit uh, longer life expectancy than the uh, chip seal treatment. Um, I guess a couple other things to note, the uh, eligible costs for the uh, travel leaves only. We had, the cost we presented also include uh, applying these treatments to the parking areas. That are on the roadways, so you know, M dot doesn't consider that participating cost. This would also do that to the on-street parking areas. And in the downtown where we're doing military service. Um, if those handicap ramps are not up to code, which I did go check, uh, those ramps. Look at the ramp slopes and all the A A accessibility requirements, those ramps have been reconstructed. So those, there were uh, on the road we're doing military service, there are also A A ramps that are being reconstructed that uh, are not currently in their plants. But that is just a little more detail, any questions you guys have? Have any? Uh, and what do you think?
We've done a good sixteen, one, you want?
Question? Uh, yeah, I got a lot, but I, I mean, I, I, I understand, but I, I mean, some of these. I, I mean, I get what you're posing to do, but we still keep talking about with. We haven't done anything for all the streets that really need something. And your work, um, I mean, I, I've spent. Probably the last month on Manny Lane, I've been down there every day, um, with, with the schoolhouses and there's a couple of lots up there, everything that we're working on. I understand Vogel one, I'd be in support of that. Um, I, I, I don't understand where this came from, quite frankly, this. Um, I don't, I don't go up any hot holes, I might be missing on Front Street. Uh, the uh, and I mean, it's just a, kind of a beautification process, let's call it what it is, but I, I. We got so many issues on roads that need some help, um, that uh, I, I just don't, and I did. I understand what you said, they, they don't want to give us any money for redoing roads. Uh, they just wanted to uh, you know, do this kind of stuff, but I think there's a lot more. I think there's a lot of other areas in town that are in a lot worse shape than any of the roads that are highlighted on here, with the exception of Vogel. Uh, that I, I, I would, I would rather look at and consider, um. I, you know, the uh, Park Street wasn't done that long. Uh, that was when we got our beautiful ballpark that's turned into the Sucka Pass. Uh, so I, I. I, I'm not, I guess, short and simple without allegory, that I, I'm not a sport. Uh, I, I just. I just look at, I, I get the preventative maintenance aspect, I understand that. And uh, but I think there's a lot, lot of other areas that could seriously use this preventative maintenance. And, and, and do those layers and, and kick these down for, you know, another, another year or so, you know. Another year, two, three ahead for, for different funding for them. Uh, that might be, but, and. And, and we have, you know, we have both assess, uh, and, 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 and I don't, I don't understand what you're saying.
So, uh, just trying to do the ballpark information, uh, P S R ratings that. Amy mentioned, we both completed in two thousand nineteen, go by C two A D, so that's a rating of your road condition. So we started with that. Um, and then, and then that's on a scale of like one to ten, with ten being graded one to four. So for projects to be able to prevent maintenance treatments, we were targeting P S R ratings of like a five to a seven. So they were like starting to go bad, but weren't past the point of critical failure where you couldn't do preventative maintenance and fix a road. So um, that's where we started, was the P S R rates, and then uh, as Mike mentioned, we, you know, kind of had discussions with the city staff. On what they thought were uh, you know, good roads to select, uh, when we thought the downtown area, um, you know. It's bruised and mellowed up or even kind of maintenance, uh, most main streets would be good. But we also, you know, we pulled this together and tried to get ahead of the curve a little bit, because I heard. What you guys said last time I was here was that we weren't getting enough time to consider this. We do have a little bit of time here if we want to adjust. The scope of this, there's still time to do that, we don't have to submit this until June fifteenth, so. You know, and we tried to maximize the grant amount, so the, the maximum grant's two hundred and fifty thousand. So we tried to come up with a minimum of five hundred thousand dollar project, because that's the fifty percent match amount. Um, so that, I guess, just a little background on how we got the roads and just wanting to know, we can still. Clean this uh, a little bit.
So on a three or four, you, you can say, you're, correct?
I, I report, yeah, correct.
I drove around, I don't know, I guess I'd like to drive, I was, was doing, having a. I agree with that, I guess I'd like to drive those with you and tell why.
Okay, um yeah, that's, you know, just following like M dots, prescribed, you know, Paser ratings are a standard M dot rating system.
Understood.
Um and we're using the data from two thousand nineteen when this was done, um which I was not a part of, but uh. That's what was our basis.
Well, my question is, so M dot will not let you resurface at three or four? Is that what you're telling me?
Uh it's it's not like the suggested um fix for that rated road, I'm not saying it couldn't be done, but. You know, if you follow their guidelines, the three or four should be to a point where it's past, you know, it's got a critical failure.
Hello. I'm in support of this, but I also, I understand what you're saying, so the 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 trick is. And what I've been saying for twelve years is we have twenty-three gravel roads. Right? And and it would be nice to spend some money on those, but that's, it's a different topic. Because it's a different topic, because this one involves grant money, this one involves the state evaluation process, the Paser process. And this one involves uh fixing only, you know, five groups up and that. Unfortunately, Marty, we can't fix three to fours according to.
That's not what we just said, that's not what we said, that's why I called her.
Well, but the chances are. The chances are that that this program is set up for five or seven, so so. Again, two different issues, I am in favor of this because. We have the opportunity to get two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is basically fifty-nine cents on the dollar to move seven roads. That's kind of logical to me, and it's worked in the past. What we've done in the past is major road repairs such as Cedar and Terrace. Port Street, I I can name all those, Dargo Street, Anna Street, and those are major. And those are involving complete uh screenscape, sidewalks, trees, and infrastructure. And those are, those are very expensive and and so again, we're out comparing capitals to others, am I, am I going down the right path here?
Yeah.
So yeah, I would love to pay our twenty-four gravel roads, I would love to pay. Ones and twos, and we, I mean, did pick out, like last year, Lincoln Street was probably. One of those roads that we did repair that was below five. And it's been, it's working great now, that's my neighbor, with no more standing water. So we s- we still have the opportunity to pick a long road and do complete construction. One year, we do have the opportunity to pay gravel roads, which we have uh in the past twelve years. But this, again, is an opportunity to get. To spend fifty-nine cents on the dollar and improve seven roads as next year's project, so so. I'm in favor of this. But I understand, right, that there's still some roads around that need repairs.
One, oh, only one question to that, okay, I understand, I remember from time, so uh three hundred forty-seven thousand dollars though. So that's a, that's a lot of money, that could, if we, if we, if we keep stealing the money all the time and doing it to. Do stuff that doesn't really need to be uh, that we're never gonna pay any of those. Gravels, or we're never gonna, you know, or we're gonna wait till the the form is completely deteriorated and we have to redo that, I. I don't know, I, you know. I don't, I don't get that rationalization, you know, okay, well, when you do this and and we can all, you know, we get, we get our fifty-nine percent match. Or we take all that money and go do a road.
Doug, have you provided any input on this agenda item?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree with the prioritization of this map, this, these roads?
I absolutely do, I come from a community with a whole lot of zeros and ones and twos. And that's where you're gonna have to, you know, put anything into roads. Um based on some photos that I've seen of roads in this current project and size and scope of the project, uh to me, this is. Preventive maintenance, and if you end up kicking it down a road, that's what you're gonna end up, that is a lot of zeros and ones and twos. That, yeah, you have a lot of dirt roads now, but you're gonna have a whole lot more, I don't care what you have, that's the way, okay? And I a hundred percent think this is a great idea, uh just because of the match, the fact that you can get a match and. You can get a lot of surface area, including the parking downtown. I think that's kind of added any, driven a show of three hundred thousand dollar project, that's a huge added benefit. For this project, calling the lines on the roads new to the eye, and it will be changing the downtown significantly.
Okay, was that any part of BPW's three screws engaged, were there any word feedback on this?
Uh not, why not, I don't know, if you guys, people would be getting here, if they were brought to your.
It would be nice to have that map that you have referenced, Marty has referenced several times, I think Tom has referenced it as well. It's the map that basically shows the ranking of our streets currently, and we don't have that in front of us. Um which would be nice to reference that in the discussion of road repairs and preventative maintenance. And looking at what the city has identified and prioritized, because right now we're just going off a meter, you don't have the material in front of us. Um and the timing, you said we have plenty of time, so our next meeting's June twelve, this is due on June fifteenth, so. If we table this now, try and see what other potential abilities. Of mapping this out looks like, or having um that material in front of us that we're all referencing. Um as far as that city, city map, I don't know, Mike's trying to pull it up right now, um. Would you be confident in this being an agenda item you're doing as well, and just being able to get it done before the fifteenth?
Yeah, so for the estimation of this, we we have to take photos of the road, we do our measurements on the lower, we develop the high level cost estimates, uh it's not a. Uh it's a super intense engineering process to get what's needed for this grant application, so yeah, I would be confident. That if you wanted to adjust the scope or look at other roadways, that would be a higher priority. That within the next couple of weeks that we could have an updated packet of the mission.
Okay, um and what is the cost, what are you charging, what is C two eighty charging the city to for these services or creating that application packet?
We're charging it uh under general services, um we haven't billed the city for anything yet, um so we're just tracking our. Our already rate right now, I don't have a total, uh I haven't sent the city a bill yet, um but that was the understanding.
Correct, we're still ballparking with that cost, I mean, if we said yes, what, what are your. What is the anticipation of, if we said yes today, this passed today, what do you think that that charge would look like? Just for you to do the application and just to potentially get a yeager name from the.
Yeah, I would put that in the five percent.
Correct.
Depending on much, that, you know, we did more to try and look at other streets, um you know, we do the the cost estimating, we had. Several meetings uh with the city, um you know, taking the photos. So there would be a little bit more important to be, yeah, put it in that range.
Okay. I mean, I I understand the concerns that Commissioner Moody brought to the table, um looking at the map. Um but I understand what you're bringing to the conversation as far as the Paser rating, is that correct?
Correct.
And M dot standards and requirements there, um. So one piece that you said in the very beginning, that essentially you guys have gone this preventative maintenance route with a five to sevens, I believe. The rating is there because of the prioritization of the grantor, who's who's providing the grant, who has those projects over complete reconstruction. So we're finding like a Paser rating road as a three or four, does that change the. Likelihood of receiving that grant as well?
Yeah, this gets, I guess, back to Commissioner Moody's point a little bit, you know, if there is a three or four that you guys wanted to look at for preventative maintenance, I think we would go. Look at that in detail right now, you know. Part of this process in the determination, uh whether we think it could be improved with preventative maintenance or if it's. To a point where this could be constructed, um you know, these Paser ratings are a little bit subjective, um. So I think we would have to kind of, if there were other streets that, you know, people needed to prioritize. We can look at that on an individual basis.
And all these Paser ratings that you're doing right now, are they current or are they from the two thousand nineteen start?
We're not doing any Paser ratings right now, we're using the two thousand nineteen Paser ratings as the basis for what streets to look at.
Gotcha, okay. I mean, I most support as far as a fifty-nine cents on the dollar. Um if there's an opportunity for us to meet timelines, to get this done, potentially find a three to four. And get some longevity out of that extended, um I would also be in favor of that as well. Um so you're kind of the expert in if you think that that could be done.
Um I think if you guys had other priority roads that you wanted us to look at, adding into this program, we could absolutely do that.
Mike, do you have that map that we've all referenced?
Uh no, not available to bring up right now, it is in your uh, is in your budget.
Yeah, it is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's announced in the budget book, but, okay. Uh just whenever the commissioner gets a. All of these roads were selected because they had specific maintenance needs, none of them are being done just to create them up or anything of that nature. If you drive down Park Street, you'll see where the pavement is peeling type off the street. And this is a section of Park Street basically from State uh into Water Street. If you go on Water Street or Front Street or Main Street or Lake Street. You'll see where the seams where the various pavement uh application were put down originally. The seams are coming apart and we're getting to the point where actually beyond the point. Where we can basically maintain them uh with our annual crack sealing program. Uh the cracks are getting so big and the water, we're not even keeping the water out, and that's where it's really gonna amplify the deterioration of those roads. That's why a lot of these streams were picked with regards to them, so again, not only are we getting grant money. To uh lessen our costs, the fifty-nine cents that's been referred to a million dollar here. But there are, but by uh extending the life of these roads. So they aren't deteriorating and getting to the zeros and ones that um Doug mentioned just a second ago. I mean, we've had to do that in the past, uh wasn't that long ago where the north section of East Street. Which was a paved street basically from Vogel North. Uh we basically had to strip that down and make it, return it into a gravel road until we get, we're only gonna get a grant. Uh to help us rebuild, to completely rebuild that, that was an exception in the state, really isn't doing that anymore. Uh they're giving us opportunities like this, so I mean, if you go and drive all these sections of streets, I think you'll find real. Strong rationale as to why uh going forward and making these recommendations. Some of these are, so are most heavily traveled streets, again, we've been maintaining them with crack sealing, but they're to the point where the cracks. Are so big and you'll see it going up. Oh um especially on the north side of Lake Street just before you hit Division, where we've actually uh taken some of those uh. Scenes or joints that came together and done patches in those areas as well, done some of that on State Street. This is giving us more ability to save the roads, hopefully, you know. Go at least three to uh seven years more with regards to them, so uh you'll see the reason of. The reason for selecting these roles were, uh hopefully. I would almost, and I guess the, I toss the question back to Eric. Is, I mean, if there are other streets that the commission uh would like to identify. For us to consider, and I think you're wanting that prior to our June thirteenth meeting to be able to research and photograph and all that type of stuff. And if that is something the commission does want to consider, we might want to have a work session or some other topic before we get to the meeting of the thirteenth. If there are other ideas or things of that nature where we could have Eric come back here and talk about it. And then give us a little bit more time if the commission did want to make some adjustments to it, so. I still strongly recommend, uh I think there's a real rational basis for this, I don't want to keep this can too far down the road, we're here at the thirteenth and we really don't have the. Time to pivot if the commission does pivot. Does he mean the thirteen?
The thirteen.
I agree with him, he's a thirteen. So I was looking at uh recommending like, do you mean, do you say the six or something like that if the commission wanted to be or something like that? We've got to get a set of time and just pass that out.
Eric, uh so was two thousand nineteen when that Paser rating were done? Is there a schedule that you're going to do that, I mean, is it every three or four years you need to?
I was actually gonna suggest, I guess, look at, oh, okay, your Paser ratings maybe in the next year, I think every five years should be appropriate. Is that something you do, or is it something? Yes, it is good. Uh you can do it either way, there's, you know, training available around that, uh Paser ratings, and what layer we're doing them, um but. The train's, the city staff, they do it also.
The commission may recall that when Tim was here, but he took the training for that, it's where we'll do that ourselves. And I'm trying to remember the map that's included in your budget book, might be here, so newer, based on some of Tim's, that's.
And uh this really, I didn't understand, it's at the bottom page, well, R seventy. And uh new this year, each eligibility is submitted of the two applications for each program here, the best agent and forecast of program budget. Over the next few years, eligible applicants are permitted to submit of the two applications for twenty twenty-four construction. Or about the two applications for twenty twenty-five construction, I'm not sure I'm moving.
That's just being, do we get to build a second project and go after another project plan in addition to, in addition to this application? Forget this, by January fifteenth versus June deadline? Correct, so we just have one proposed project right now.
Does that, does that make it better for us, it's competitive, you know, you have one, or should we have two?
Uh I don't think it would make it any more or less competitive, it would just change the amount of applicants, the model, potential projects out there to be funded. Um I don't think it would make you more competitive if you had to.
Or less more competitive?
Or less competitive, it would be evaluated as a project against all the other projects communities are submitting, and it would be ranked on the merits of that individual project.
Yeah, uh the idea of the dirt roads, gravel roads in our community comes up a lot. Is there any way you could give a ballpark figure of how tall the mountain is we have to climb? To uh start an agent progress on that, or some sort of plan that we could work on or we could work on over the next ten years? The only deal with that, there really, everything we talked about, both we talked about, the streets are earned a day.
Right. Um I think, you know, it's all capital improvement plans for the roadways would be a good start, I'm not sure, um. How old and current capital improvement plan is, um as far as construction, you know, you'd have to. Look at, you know, the roadways, the specific site conditions, um drainage would be a big thing, you know, the gravel base should. Uh be sufficient hopefully with the depth and the type of gravel that's down existing, um. But you know, I think as far as the amount behind getting like a streets program, a capital improvement plan and cost identified. You know, targeting which roads you want to focus on.
Uh we've had uh C two eighty provide estimates uh for each road segment that is gravel, as to what it would cost to pave them. And we've had that updated a couple of times, since I think it's a couple of years old now. Um I mean, that'd be a good place to start having a total picture and then it breaks it down for a street, right, that I like.
Yeah, yeah, let me send that to you guys. The other thing too, like maybe with the cost, the cost to be shared with the DEA, I mean, their budget, their downtown development plan. Their maintenance costs and, you know, but that type of thing, so they will necessarily have to, you know, serve during the GTA district, then. Legal, possible?
Yes, I mean, the DEA contributed to the creation, well, mainly they worked on the streetscape portion. Of the downtown elements that were in the district, and sidewalks, the brick pavers, the uh. Treescapes, things of that nature. Um, I think most of the road improvements and the water and sewer underneath them were covered by road bump or general bumping of waters. And there's nothing illegal with regards to it. Uh, I don't think they have anything proposed in their current budget.
Okay, well.
Um, it's fair, and just a few more comments, I guess. Um, I can remember when you was paid is there training and. Mike brought up that I drove all these roads this week and there's one road with a good inch and a half team and that's the worst. Situation that well, or should be in there and uh roots are pretty good. I guess, so I, I'm, I'm going to go back to it. I think this is a good project, but. But here's, here's one of my concerns. I don't think. We're going to be effective by tableing this for two weeks. I think, I think we'd be more effective passing it today. With the stipulation that if there were some roads that Doug or Marty or Mike or the road crew would recommend. That could be substituted in, then you'd have the next two weeks present that. But, but to table it for two weeks, then the whole project over given, have the same discussion over again. I don't think it would give us time to do justice. So I, you know, I'd be willing to make a motion that there could be some substituting in on those roads.
Well, they wanted to make the motion and then we'll get a discussion moment. I don't like that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said prior to that, I would like to throw in, before you had your last question.
When I finish, by, and, and lastly, I guess, I, I really think we need to trust our experts. Uh, our road superintendent, our engineer, our city manager. I think we need to move forward with this based on. Um, state's process, on our local experts. And, and with the stipulation that yes, we can use substitution.
Um, I think the meat in the middle is kind of like. What you're, you're on page seventy here. If this application, and I don't want to table it either, just because it's another thing that's just getting pushed out of the X meeting. And we already have too many things that are getting pushed down, meeting after meeting after meeting, that's not on this meeting. To be in this meeting, but that's a whole nother issue in itself. Um. What about doing this application and I have like a Tom's idea on Marty. Where Doug identifies anything else that could be substituted in there. Or even the idea of splitting two applications, here's the five and seven's route and developing a three and four route. As far as the ratings of three and fours and submitting two applications, trying to secure two opportunities of fifty nine cents on the dollar. And Marty even provided, oh, input on the threes and four phaser readings on that second application route as well. I mean, we have the opportunity to do two. I mean. From the very beginning of this memo going over, it's a great idea. It made a sense, even the EPW. Um, director, Monica's director is even providing, is important in his opinion. And the no brainer, we have the opportunity at two no brainer applications. Let's, let's make that opportunity a rational decision right now.
Okay. Martin, I was gonna say, I, I, I'll find what, what you and Tom both said. I, all I said was. The bottom line is, you can't just say, hey, say, we want five hundred thousand dollars, we'll, we'll do two hundred fifty and then. We'll determine where the heck we want to put down the road. We have to take ahead of that. All I said was I had to promise the couple of these. I got no problem passing, doing, you know, we don't have to pay it, but I'm fine. You know, but I, you know, but so let, let me add, let me point blank ask you that, Doug. So you drove every one of these. And these are the ones compared to everything else in that page.
Well, I do ask that question, buddy. And I, I don't, was given on that answer is. And my answer is I don't believe shows at all any way in any shape or any form that it legally in this. So. I just know what I saw on what they presented and I know they're in, they're in bad shape. Every one that I saw, I didn't say. And I'm not trying to be flippant, I'm just letting you know. I don't present, I'm not trying to lose, present choice in any way. I don't know these roads at all. So, but I didn't know the roads that I came from and I know how they got there. And how they got there was a lot of tape, a lot of talking, rather than not doing. And you can go pro it or we can go react and stuff to us. That, that's kind of my take and I would be happy to definitely give a view or whoever. And if there's other roads we could, we could do two things at once, we can shoot them a lot. So I'm happy to even do the two application thing, whatever you guys want.
I think the two application thing is fine to do. I didn't know that without.
Yeah.
So what, 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 when is that meeting of second application, what?
Do they have to scope out all their projects?
I think if we move quickly, uh, like starting tomorrow. But it would be scoping out another project, developing the costs. Uh, if you wanted to look at reconstruction. Uh, I would, you know, I think to be competitive, this franchise, you appear to be construction improvements, which is what the city has done in the past. Was that uh successful with funding, which is why we tried to go to preventive maintenance route, but um. Yeah, we could certainly scope out an underground and develop the cost and have two, essentially two packets, two applications.
Um, Mike, can you weigh in just this one piece here? And you left her, uh, near now, you say there's sufficient money in our road budget to cover the engineering for this year. Yes, would there be sufficient money in our budget on two applications?
I believe so.
Okay, and would you anticipate our budget being healthy in here coming twenty four? If both, if we had the opportunity of both applications being awarded?
I believe so.
I think there's a lot of variables out there and further out to go, right, the less certain you are. Um. But yes, I mean, we have two opportunities to go for it. I would say, yes, now Mike was one of the projects off, but. But the way, but they, the way they're ready is that, that spread over, we can spread that over two different.
So the budgets in this application includes engineering fees. Um. So if we develop a second application, uh, you know, there will be additional fees for that, those projects. And just, I guess, a comment on the engineering piece, we were proposing. Uh, to do this as what's called a log job, which is a standard M dot. Uh, project delivery format where you're not doing full blown engineering plans. Because these are preventive maintenance type of work, we're not G D grades, we're not doing underground infrastructure. Uh, we can do this as what's called a log job. So the engineering fees are um. Less than a full blown, you know, set of engineering drawings and bidding documents. So we are trying to make this cost effective for the city from an engineering perspective.
Okay, so what we would be doing is we would be approving the recommendation.
Yes, what I'd almost recommend, could be basically what I'm hearing at this point. If the commission is comfortable improving the application for the twenty four season as presented now. And have us develop a second application for the twenty five season. That could then come back at the city commission's June thirteenth meeting. With all that input, you know, that we have, we have on the streets or anything that we want to bump around, we can do that at that point. So it's kind of, it gives us to bite the apple, the commission's interest in that. And if for some reason the commission isn't comfortable with the second round. You don't have to go forward.
No, no, I don't think that's what was said in the whole thing, that my comment did. I, what was said was that, okay, we, we can look at these and some of them are, you know. If, if, if Doug, you know, says, yeah, you know, these, these are tough. And these are, I, I agree one hundred percent, you know, and, and so a couple of these other, some phases are done. It don't need to be done right now, because we don't want to, we're getting one or two. So I want this one to be right. I think so, uh, that wasn't what was just proposed by Tom and so I'm, I'm, I wouldn't be for it.
You, what, what were you proposing then? I, I think Marty and I are on the same page, that I would make a motion. You know, to go through with the stipulation that in the next two weeks, staff. Could uh instruct to substitute other roads.
I may interject, all things that need to happen is, has to be at the resolution. Uh, supporting the scope of the project and the management. So that's, that's the end. This, we need a resolution to be part of the application.
I put that in my motion for one of the two applications. Yeah, I confused on two applications. My own motion would not, that did not address two applications.
Right.
I confused on that.
Oh, yeah, it's very simple. We're gonna go ahead, everyone out, you're gonna be a fifty nine cents on the dollar to.
Right now it's one.
Okay. But we have to go over two. Is it that here the commission says there are sentences, I want to go for two opportunities that are only.
Oh, two. For me, I, I don't have a problem going for two, but I wanted to clarify that.
Right.
The first one is modify.
Right, so just add, and whatever your motion looks like, just make a first, that you have fifty nine cents to a dollar, or can be in your application. But I mean, would essentially support a resolution on scope for three to applications and manage funding for two applications as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation, city manager Michael King to review the roads and preservation estimates prepared for possible M dot. Category B grant funding authorized C two A E and city staff to prepare and submit two grant requests. Of two hundred fifty thousand dollars of an estimated total project of five thousand nine, five hundred ninety seven thousand nine hundred sixty eight dollars. With the stipulation that uh within the next two weeks, staff and uh C two A E can work. Together to see if there's any roads that would be substituted.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure if you can use the two hundred fifty thousand, we're submitting two. This is for the one range, okay?
Yeah.
So may, maybe we should take one of this, it's one motion, okay? And then have a separate motion, maybe clear exactly what that motion is for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, one, so Jessica, I just figured out we're, we're two grant requests. Can I have one clarification done? Well, because our, our paper requires this with our motion. Our city cost is three hundred forty seven and this says it'll be three hundred ninety seven. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I think we just started all over.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve recognition. Of city manager Michael King to review the roads and preservation estimates prepared for possible M dot category B grant funding. And authorize C two A E and city staff to prepare and submit a grant request of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Of an estimated total project of five thousand, five hundred ninety seven thousand nine hundred sixty eight dollars. With the stipulation that uh staff and C two A E can compile the next two weeks. Possible road substitutions.
I'll support that first.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
So we have a motion and the second, is there any other discussion? Overall, please. But now there would be a second motion.
I'll make a second motion that the city commission allows C two A E to. Scope out and work for a second application from M dot category B grant funding. And to bring that go to the city commission on the June thirteenth, twenty twenty three meeting.
Could I, okay, there's a second, oh, sorry. You know, maybe C two A E and city staff, C two A E and city staff. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Who is the second?
Did you have something to mention?
Well, thank you, thank you. Uh, just clarification, we'll have two resolutions to pass at the next meeting, one for each application. Thank you.
In the meantime, would you mind just sending us all that map that's on your budget, just an email?
Yeah.
And uh, I can ninety avalanche park survey for Bull. With recognition from the Department of Recreation to approve that later, conduct total survey, we open with erosion control. The relevant spillway, the mid slope, thought in the fall, hundred thirty seven thousand.
And uh, the park recreation uh commission made fourth meeting. They gave, I provided an update uh that was provided by Tim Knutson of Becker and Rager with regards to completing two surveys at Amman Park. Uh, one was for the mid cross, um, slow crossing. And another one was overlook uh for the overlook itself to address the motion problems. Uh, these costs, the cost of these surveys were estimated between six thousand and seventy five hundred dollars. Uh, the commission talked about these for quite some time as to uh. How to move forward with this issue. Uh, they're very concerned with the erosion that's taking place at the top of Amman. Watching down the face of the hill and really felt it was important to get these surveys done. Uh, so it was uh moved by. Ben Naez and uh seconded by Schmidt Dale and approved unanimously. To recommend to the city commission that they approved Becker and Rager to conduct. Uh, both the survey for the overlooked erosion control as well as the mid slope ser- uh crossing. Uh, to move forward with the erosion control on the front face of Amman Park. Uh, funds for this work are available in the uh park portion of the city budget. Um, so the recommendation was that the city commission approved the Becker and Rager, uh, conduct both surveys. Both the survey for the overlook motion as well as the mid slope crossing for a cost naturally exceed and that should be seventy five hundred dollars. Not the seven thousand that was listed.
The other staff? Any uh, I don't know.
Full support, I think. Putting that outlook halfway through there, because this is the beginning of a plan. You know, survey, the design, it doesn't mean you're doing it, it could give us a step. I, I think that'd be very um. Good looking and it would stop the people who are going from top to bottom to. To the erosion and I think it cuts the sledge in half. If I'm interpreting this right, am I? Okay, so people couldn't come all the way to the top, so. Yeah, okay, and that, that's a safety issue. I've been there many, many times, I've been chopped down from. Sleds coming from above, and my grandson take off at the top, lucky he's alive. Um. It's a danger and, and this would be pretty cool repetitive.
So is this, is this survey just uh a boundary survey that they're doing or is this like an overall? This is worth the pay, this part is.
More top graphical survey, okay, not, not boundary survey, okay.
When is the parks and recs landing or prioritizing after the survey is done? The beginning project of this, this year, that year?
Uh, it could probably be the next one year. So if I could, you know, just a little background, we have, there, there have been a few plans. That have been uh designed to deal with erosion of the chocolate. It's really complicated, would require a lot of construction, no getting material about it down. Hopefully, I could be the parts and recognition that my guy. About, you know, involve the statements in that and how they're going to be able to move, develop the correct issue without getting into much construction. So the survey basically is the, the total, so we know what. Solutions might be available, but until that's done, we just stand there, you know, very sitting on our hands without anything.
Got it.
So it's just mid slope, uh, boardwalk, it's a long way from being on the data lane. That's, that, uh, which is, as, I don't know, fifteen years old. And then the, but that's, so I would expect that the, uh, there's a lot of other needs. You know, I think that I would judge it in that right now, so, but, but the. You know, I think that I would judge it in that right now, so, but but the sole problem, we need to, we need to get this split open.
The only concern that I have, and that's the reason why even if water in regards, you being the liaison on parks and record is. I just don't want to get in a scenario where we pass this seventy five hundred dollar expensive survey. And then it just doesn't become a priority in the next year, and then here we are five hundred years later, we're ready to pull the trigger. But yeah, the survey is not valid for your goal that there is currently, so now we, it's invalid, so we're gonna have to get another one. So as long as it's a priority.
Right. Well, something has to be done in the time period.
Right, I mean, it didn't want.
Yeah, that thing has been done in the last twenty four months.
Okay. All right. Right?
Yeah, I can ask my question, so I I I'm good. I I it seemed expensive, but now the history, it's quite what's serious like that. Maybe just to verify, so I did. Overlooking. The halfway overload? Or are you saying the overload? Uh, the erosion is at the top, okay, you know, it's eating away right there, it's, I don't know, always like that. Fifteen feet wide now.
So this is survey, that or this survey, both, oh, oh. Well, you're developing the survey to have correctable actions up top and halfway.
Right, okay, that that's right.
Yeah, and what happens at the top?
Down, right, so like structured halfway with service, an erosion stopper. Plus an overlook.
That's possible, but I think the issue is at the top with erosion that needs to be corrected.
Okay.
But there, you know, thousands of sites, which we had indicated about before now, the confines of sliding gale. And people are only at the top, and the people are at the bottom, where you can evolve minutes and all those.
So, but this is the survey, this is not the construction.
Oh, all right, not not construction, but engineering, uh, okay.
I I I'm interested in that, I follow.
And, you know, there have been some donors, you know. Made themselves known that in. And then it's done without, okay, city resources. So we need a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll make a motion in that the city commission approved that generator. To conduct all the survey for the overlooked erosion control as well as the survey for the mid slope crossing and a cost not to exceed seventy five hundred dollar. There's a.
Fair.
Any further discussion?
Where where the seventy five hundred, so so though.
Uh, off the top, Murray, it says six, it's seventy five, oh my god, Mike said that that seven was the type of. Right, it should be seven, yeah, yeah. Exactly.
And other discussion? Jessica, will you please?
Moody.
Hi.
Me can.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Pastor.
Hi.
What you do?
At this reason, uh, meeting the park and recreation commission, uh, especially with that in regards to the purchasing of. Deck of bike racks, the start at our April sixth meeting. Uh, when Don Smith donated the money to purchase the telescope at the Rivermouth Restrooms, the city ended up with roughly six thousand dollars that was left. That purchase. Don asked uh that the remaining six thousand dollars be used to purchase decorative bike racks. The Parks Commission uh reviewed possible white racks, including those from Darrow Company of Lake Florida. Uh, quotations were provided for a variety of white rack styles. The matter was just often discussed by the Main Street Board's Design Committee meeting and their. Meeting. Both groups discussed uh costs, locations, alternatives, and capacity. It was noted that most of the decorative bike racks could only hold two bikes. Uh, for the reasons of look, saying capacity, both groups got coming back to the salmon fish. That rack is a hundred and seventy by fifty one inches and has a ten bike capacity. The groups discussed possible location at or near Sunset Park, uh, the Rivermouth and the Ogden Space. Uh, the price for that rack is six thousand two hundred and twenty nine dollars thirty nine cents plus shipping. Uh, EPW Parks employees already. Consulted on this manner and requested that whatever rack was acquired, then winter snowstorm would be taken into consideration at what whatever location. The new racks placed. Uh, the park and recreation commission felt that uh first month should be used to complete the purchase. Uh, there are available funds in the parks capital holiday account to cover this expense. Uh, so the recommendation is that the city commission approve the park and recreation commission's recommendation, purchase the. Darrow bike rack salmon fish design using the remainder of Don Smith's donation that was previously designated for the purchase of. Decorative bike rack supplemented by parks capital holiday funds and authorize city staff to complete the purchase.
Any comment? Questions?
And the fish that's being, or the the rack, I should say, that's being considered, is the one that's on the, the next page of the top left corner. Oh, and. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm in full support, the funds are coming, um, uh, donated. Essentially that was for the sulfurous bite backs, that's exactly what he wants, so, yeah, it's a number.
Yeah, oh, oh, I was gonna ask, I mean, Smitty was very uh uh very generous to the city and. And we did, um. Did you try it? I mean, we got, um. Uh, Chase does all kinds of creative welding and stuff, he's already done, and we reached out to him and. I mean, this is mainly a welding project in color. Uh. Just uh.
Yeah, I don't know Chase, I don't know Chase, but I, there are three. Three manufacturers who, uh, were consulted, they proposed ideas, they were kind of multiple. Uh, the park directing uh plan to continue their relationship with them, but if you know someone who worked with that and come up with something, both are.
Who's it, what? No, I I don't want to stall anything, no, it is just, he's he's right up here, you know, right about BP station.
Yeah, right. I don't know, do you don't think that people?
Not specifically to build this, but as you mentioned, I believe he and whether or talk to by park board members about other. Decorative white racks uh styles, uh, some of them had businesses names in it or some other components of it. And they didn't feel that was compatible with Smitty's request, and they thought this was more compatible, but they thought there might be opportunities. Bring some of that other working house or more.
And then you do with the trailer connector now, but if you might get it to necessarily, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm in full support of that, you're already, you got I M I.
Yeah.
Those that, you had Wally Barclay, you got Chase. And you you got local talent that could duplicate that, maybe cheaper. And maybe not cheaper.
And maybe, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, cuz I I don't.
There there were three uh businesses consulted, I'm not a decorator shit, we didn't treat.
Okay, so fair enough.
Fair enough, yeah, that's, yeah, that's all I want.
And some of their products are probably even a little more than here next year. I think the other two businesses were were uh I M I and W O dot.
Yeah. Okay.
And the chase, excuse me, the chase at the Woben Shop is where by the BP station.
Yeah.
Oh, different than then, yes, correct, yeah.
That wasn't very.
Correct.
I M I can just. Didn't stick on that, right?
That, I mean.
So I'm entertaining motion to recruit your partners, right?
I'll make a motion that the city commission approve the parks recreation commission rec- recommendation to purchase the Duro bike racks salmon. Fish design using the remainder of Don Smith's donation that was previously designated for the purchase of decorative bike racks. Subminated by Parks Capital Offlight Funds and authorized city staff with purchase.
Is there a second? Or? Any other discussion? We'll call Jessica.
Me can.
Hi.
Sandra.
Hi.
Pastor.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
What you do?
I was just gonna ask, if you give us an install, that's where. If we were purchasing it permanently, then it's all, we had it installed by our.
If we want to.
About that twenty three rack, we'll just control contract on the word of recommendation. Recovery that they did.
Oh.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Mears, this is me, obviously.
Thank you.
Uh, so basically, I reached out, uh, interviewed, uh, public authorities, I actually has a patient liquid dust, spread to control the dust. And many of those residents have been uh. Asking me, when's this gonna happen, so hopefully we can make this happen sooner or later. Uh, I have reached out to local authorities, actually county, uh, to receive a bid and set a post here for your review. Uh, video prices, we raised down the gallons. And you can see this is a significant savings for us to try this D and J bone dust control, who the state of county actually uses. Uh, so I I would have a written award that service for my application and the thirty two percent, thirty two cents per gallon rate. Which produces the total cost of four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars with possibly local applications as the season and weather permits. Uh, obviously, we get an order A or a B in terms of what uh has put on the books, so. That's my recommendation, any questions, I'm asking you for your questions.
Any questions?
I was gonna take a moment, I know you're gonna. Uh, yeah, well, I'm with that. Living on one of those that is in dire need of it, uh. So, but you you say, so. It's a, it it's a savings compared to the last year?
Yes, correct, so that was that was I actually submitted the uh map, the overview, and these are all the roads. Uh, some parking lots not allowed to drive, which are the places, and they were uh more than happy to say, yeah, we can get that done right at the same time. Maybe every kind of conference is gonna be with next week, so, uh, coming to to a same theater, maybe very soon, hopefully you'll see our trucks. Uh, what we'll do is, as we have the news passing, P W will go running, where the girls will have that opportunity for people to drive on that cable. Okay, so that's the gist of the analysis taking out and problems, concerns, not will address them, but. Uh, and people we previously used for several years have reached out to me too, and and I absolutely want to keep that relationship open with them in case. Obviously, it's been done, so. That's been around, okay?
As we begin, I'd say maybe we'll call soon. Done.
Full support.
Full support.
You too.
Um, made recommendation that the city commission awarded purchase work contract with D and J Bones. That's control for the twenty twenty three gravel road dust control program, the amount not to exceed twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty. If reapplications are married and required further, I would recommend that the city manager execute that.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Any other discussion? Jessica, please.
Sandra.
Hi.
Pastor. Moody.
Hi.
Me can.
Hi.
What you do?
By the age of earth fertilization contract, then she.
I'm assuming they're there, I basically I reached out to this company, uh, got rid of the first term in this. Because I was told that a gentleman doesn't uh digging that, yeah, a rubbish, obviously, so. And I went around, got that bid and read this in front of us, so hopefully we can get that going too because. Uh, that has to happen, I think in July, they said that that chemical would be most effective. With the way it was sitting around in those types of things, so just trying to get ahead of that here as well, uh, for us.
Bros. Well, my comment is environmentally sound, is it? Is closer to water, is maybe the sanders.
As hard as I guess, it's the same to choose that I'm here to pass.
Okay.
Uh, do you? So is this this firm has achieved a set of three options that you can provide bids at for?
I did not, I did hear the basis from everybody that I got to.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, no one else here stops me, so.
Okay.
Our, my understanding of other people that view the actual fertilization were significantly more.
Gotcha. And might this for future reference, do you typically provide all those bids for us to analyze them? Cross-reference them, see what might be a difference in there? Or? Uh, generally not the full bid specifications, uh, many can will provide the the narrative. So you have the price comparisons underneath the firms, right, to make sure we can provide that, who's in mental over there? I don't have that on the top here. I mean, I'm full support, obviously, it needs to be done, so that we, do you, just curious as far as. The information, the difference in the firms. Like, yeah.
Right. Yeah, the only question I would have, so, uh. You got a lot of. Lot of time festivals and stuff coming up, so how's that gonna be done in between those or whatever?
I I was told the finally reacted. After the big one, we just got through the Russian festival, but sometime in July, so it'll probably be ready by.
That's what I mean, sometime in July, so you got. Fourth of July.
Try coordinating and the person who's applying, because they, let's make sure that we have the time that makes the most sense, or if it'd be prior to that, I would think. It has to do with the rain too.
There. Yes, uh, which varies the actual applications with regards to festivals and things like that. Uh, usually when they put the applications down, it just takes twenty four hours for it to dry before it's safe for the the public to use it. And they're signing into that feature at this time.
Okay, I support the renovation.
Okay. Make a motion that the city commission award a purchase work contract with Northern Green Lawn North for the twenty twenty three fertilization contract. In a amount not to exceed fifteen thousand nine hundred, further, I recommend the city manager execute the documents. For, okay, does the manager just be staff?
Any other discussion? We'll call Jessica. Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Me can.
Hi.
Sandra.
Hi.
We had two items, uh, nine, nine J, uh, closing session requests. Nine, I consider the request of City Manager Michael Kane to go into closed session for a periodic personnel evaluation of a couple of doctors. And provided an M C L one five. That two six eight of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, which is exempt from the disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act. And a second request from City Manager Michael Kane going closed session for the purpose of adult client privilege discussion, discussion. Pursuant to section, section eight H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. To discuss material protected by the interim client privilege, which is exempt from disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act. So. We have those two, but uh before we make a motion to go into closed session, there's good in the order. There, anything, mission, do they do that problem in there?
Uh. Yes, you combined the two motions, that's what I understand what you.
Yeah, yeah. That okay, or should they be done?
I think they can be combined, I haven't seen a reason why they couldn't.
Okay, well, under good of the order, I just wanted to update the commission, uh, our community exchange, and it's not that been that easy to find date. Uh, so, and the last uh email interaction I had to mirror ensued, it was thought maybe. Possibly this year, one one of this was made, maybe next year, another this is made. Uh, but we still hadn't, I hadn't got confirmation about dates yet, we submitted it to, it was June twenty and uh September. Or August. There is a second date because. The tenth ninth, I think it might be September, and then. Anyway. Stay tuned.
So. Uh, we need a motion.
The only thing I had for good of the order was I just wanted to give kudos to our cleaning company, they're like, happy, you know.
Yes.
For the mushroom festival, majority of the day, they stayed right down at the pavilion consistently throughout the day to check in the rest space. So kudos then.
Yeah, they give a great chance to see what you're bringing in.
Are any of you going to go to the Republican comics for the company? I can't make it. That's all I go to because I like to have a.
What time is it?
I figured it is. I sent my management report. I'm planning on attending.
Okay, I was thinking I might as well.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be a present, sir. That was a pretty big project, but I can't make it. But I'll be at the slash bed tonight.
Okay, so the motion.
Make motion to go into closed session. Your vote. Periodic personnel evaluation of the bulk officer and closed session for the purpose of returning client privilege. Is this thing? Right.
I'm going to be.
I mean, that needs to be a ball.
Jessica. Boody.
Hi.
Mia.
Hi.
And Jess.
Hi.
Hi.
Hey, ladies and gentlemen. And sad. Unfortunately, I got the whole experience there today.
You didn't, you didn't make. The country post market.
All three of us. We're.